Welcome to the study section for April, whatever today is, 12th. This evening, we will be hearing from Clackamas Community College, our college board member that serves our district, Greg Chima, former city councilor. Victor White, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. It's a pleasure to be speaking with anyone live. It's a particular pleasure to be speaking to the body on which I have the honor of serving. Our president, Tim Cook, says his regrets. He very much wanted to be here, but as a early morning meeting in central Oregon and given the amount of snow in the passes, thought he should travel over in daylight. He will be giving the State of the College address Friday, April 22, 3 o'clock at the Harmony Campus in the city of Milwaukee, and we hope you will attend. One of the things that we're also hoping is that if we are in fact passing into a safer time, that campus and its community room is going to be substantially more available for use by the broader community because that's always been a sentiment. I know you have an important guest tonight, so I'm going to make an effort to be succinct. I will probably skip some of the slides that were prepared and focus on mostly reintroducing ourselves to the community. We spent a uncomfortable last couple of years with very few students on campus. So I was sharing with Ms. Ober. To our great surprise, when the pandemic hit, we shifted to largely online instruction. We discovered that young students didn't want to study online. They wanted to be there in person, and if they couldn't be there in person, they weren't coming. So we have somewhat of a job to attract folks back. So you have some handouts, facts and figures about the college as well as...
Sorry, I have some electronic.
You have some electronic. You don't need to refer to them for this chat, as well as an article from the Clackamas Review about some free summer high school camps that are going to be put on. You can get students can get college credit for CTE and dental fields. If you know of high school students, please encourage them to sign up. It's the best price possible for getting some college credit. It just means you need to spend a little bit of your summer studying when you probably would rather not be. So we have three campuses. Our main campus in Oregon City, where we offer pretty much everything. Our Harmony Campus in Milwaukee, which focuses on healthcare and criminology. And our Wilsonville Campus, which has as its particular focus, teaching people how to fix power lines. That is in fact a job in high demand as we have experienced with the ice storms and fires. Those lines are in constant need of repair. And where people go to learn to do that is at that campus. So that's one of the kinds of jobs you can get. It does not take what one would consider to be a full college degree. You simply learn enough science and enough technology in PGE and Pacific Corps, they're waiting to hire you. So it's a fine opportunity. So a number of students want to go to a four-year institution, get a four-year degree. If you want to do that and you want football games and frat parties, we are not the place to go. We don't have football team and we don't have frats. We do have the four consecutive time college, junior college wrestling champion team, which draws students from frankly all over in part because all of them end up with scholarships to four-year institutions when they're done. So that's been a good draw for us. But if you don't want football games and you don't want frat parties, you can get your first two years at Clackamas in small classes taught by teachers who are dedicated to teaching. My daughter took physics at a large public university with 400 other students, taught by a graduate assistant, didn't like it, didn't do well, came home, retook the class, got a community college with 18 students, got it and loved it. So that's the kind of difference in experience you get in your first two years there with us. The cost is less than half that going to a public university here. So you can spend $25,000 in tuition alone going to one of our public universities. You can spend about $11,000 and go to Clackamas to take pretty much the same classes. So as a result, who are our students? Compared to university students, they tend to be older, they are more likely to be of color, they are more likely to be parents, they are more likely to be the first to try college, and they are more likely to be less affluent. As a result, they tend to require or need more support than I would say a typical college student does or typical university student does because they don't have support from parents. They have to be supporting people themselves and they have life challenges that a typical university sophomore simply doesn't have. So one way that students can afford to go to a community college is through the Oregon Promise Program. All high school students can go to community college in Oregon for two years for free. You have to apply to the federal government for aid and take what the federal government gives you, but what the federal government doesn't give you, the stable background. And they lower the requirements. All you have to do is get a two-point grade point average coming out of high school and your two years of college are free. The downside for us and for community colleges is this is an opportunity that is only available to students coming out of high school and the majority of our students don't. Typical student would be someone who's been in the military for four to six years, they now have a family, they may want to turn what they learned in the military into a career in civilian life, and they need to come and get the additional classes to get there. And this program isn't available for them. Our bread and butter is career technical education. We teach people how to make things, airplane parts, we teach people how to farm, how to fix cars, how to fix teeth. A lot of it is hands-on, which has been a particular challenge during the pandemic. We have, for example, a number of programs, these are nine of them, in which a student can spend nine months and no more than nine months and come away with a certificate that gets that student qualified for an available job, probably in the range of $35,000 to $50,000. And that's, so you're spending in tuition, not quite $6,000 to get one of these kind of jobs. Another large part of what we do involves high schools. We provide GED classes to many people. Many are immigrants who haven't had the opportunity to go to school. We teach GED in both Spanish and in English and take the GED program to get that high school diploma that they need to either get or keep a job. The other high school aspect of our teaching actually occurs in high schools. The Advanced College Credit Program is one that not enough families take advantage of. You, a student, signs up to take a class at the high school taught by the regular high school teacher, and Clackamas Community College will have worked with that teacher to ensure that the teaching qualifies for college credit. And so for about $10 a credit, which is less than one-tenth of what a credit costs if you take the class at a community college, you complete the class and you get the college credit. We see students, not infrequently, who have earned an entire year of college simply through the Advanced College Credit Program. If we could get more students encouraged to sign up with that, it would both help both them and us. We're working on some initiatives now. This is a list of them to try to make ourselves as relevant as possible to the broader community and also to our students, and I wanted to highlight a couple of them. One is on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are trying very hard to attract and retain more non-dominant students and employees. We don't do as good a job keeping students of color and staff of color as we would like to. We have developed a DEI plan. We are implementing it in part through our new Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer. Casey Layton is a resident of Milwaukee and has been with us for about a year now and is doing absolutely fabulous work making sure that, to the extent that we're able to, we're making every decision possible through an equity lens. She's been very, very helpful as we rework college policies and procedures, pointing out to us how, for example, a dispute resolution procedure that makes a lot of sense to one of us, say on the board, who's maybe been through working on the city council, that sort of thing, wouldn't make sense to a young Hispanic girl who hasn't been in the position of having to be in positions of power and that we need to make sure that we have avenues available for everyone to make sure that they're getting their voices heard. We also identified a significant need in early education professionals who speak Spanish. So we added a program, it's very popular, at the end of which students who speak Spanish receive certification to work in early childhood education. We're hoping as we can to expand that because it's been very, very well received. One of the things that we are most proud of is our new Wachino Welcome Center. It's named after Chief Wachino of the Clackamas Indians and is the new front door to the college. So when you come in off the main entrance, that's the first building you see next to the parking lot. And in addition to being what we like to think of as a particularly welcoming and inclusive building, it has allowed us to develop a new way of counseling students that seems likely to be much more helpful than the ways that we've approached it in the past. In the past, if you came in and you wanted to know what to take, you were sent to see an academic counselor. Then if you wanted to figure out how to register for class, you went to see someone else. If you wanted to figure out how to pay for it, you went to the financial aid office and that might be in another building. And if you're having just a terrible day, you're not having a good time at work, it's made it you apart, it's hard for you to study, you want to go see a regular counselor and that isn't yet another building. We've now gathered all of those resources in one building. It's a one-stop process. The student comes in and says, these are the people I need to see. That student never moves and people come to that student. And from the experience of the other colleges that have tried that, it's been very helpful in having students feel more connected to the college, spend less energy trying to do hard and complicated things just to be able to take a class and to lead to greater retention. So that, we've just started this, but this bodes very well. Finally, if you have an opportunity and haven't yet, we invite you to come to our Environmental Learning Center. That's just off of Beaver Creek entrance to the college. It's the headwaters of Newell Creek. It's been largely renovated. It's got beautiful walking paths, native plants. It's principally used to encourage the next generation of students in stewardship of the environment. So we've got everything from opportunities for little kids up to high school. Certainly is made uses made up by older folks. It's in many ways the way in which we get young students excited about the work. With that, I thank you very much for your attention and would be pleased to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Being the teacher here.
Yes.
Being part of my job as the teacher for that here. On the slide that you had where kids can learn credit, I suppose it would be great if we could do some education classes too, as opposed to just Spanish, the film. I've talked to Lorette Scott a lot about this because, you know, in our push to diversify Oregon's educator workforce, the less time kids have to spend in university gets them into a classroom sooner.
Yes.
Right? Also, a great way to help diversify the higher ed workforce because I also know that that's really lacking.
Yes.
Is to tap into the school districts, right? And getting those teachers of color who are currently teaching in schools to be adjuncts. So now you have these kids, these kids of color, who if they're interested in becoming a teacher or whatever, they can see themselves in their higher ed as well because it doesn't... Right now, we're so focused on K-12 that we're forgetting higher ed, and we still have kids of color in higher ed, right?
Oh, yes.
They still need to see themselves in those classrooms, you know, teaching those classrooms. So, you know, reaching out to more of the local school districts or, you know, I could even help facilitate some of that to get more teachers of color to be adjuncts. And, you know, some of those folks might not even think that it's an opportunity or don't even know it's an opportunity.
Thank you. We will take you up on that. This is one of our highest priorities. So you'll be hearing from us. Thank you. Madam President.
I would suggest yesterday in the Clackamas Childcare For All meeting, and I didn't hear all of the presentations, but overall mood in that room, in the virtual room, it went "hmm" as more and more data was shared about the crisis around childcare.
Oh, yes.
I thought it was really interesting that you have had such demand for the ECE, the Spanish programs, and was just wondering if you have any insights into what's been particularly successful about that? Because right now, it's sounding like there's a real bond that's just due to wages in getting people interested in that as a career, also because it's not particularly respected. You know, people think that folks who work with early childhood are babysitters. So I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about what does need to work and how it is... I'm also curious about how it's connected to the childcare providers kind of in the region because I know they're always looking for people.
I don't know how the program is connected to providers in the region, but I will find out. The program is successful and popular despite the low wages that graduates may get because, one, many of these people are doing this anyway and getting paid even less. And this is a step up and gets you ready for another potential step to something better. So I don't think it says a great deal about us as a society as a whole that this is a program that is as needed and as popular it is, it is, but it is. I forgot, you're mentioning the meeting dragged. One thought I had, I forgot to include a slide and tell you about this, but it's one of the things that we're most pleased with. There's an organization called Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine, and they provide, you know, Mayor Norris's husband is one of the founders, and they provide free medical care to whoever needs it. And we are providing with space on campus. They have unsatisfactory accommodations in Oregon City, but we're giving them basically the wing of a building that they are then building out into medical facilities. A large portion of the folks that they care for are immigrants who either aren't eligible for Medicaid or haven't gotten enough help to sign up for the public systems that are available to them. But we're very pleased to have that as a resource, not only for our healthcare students, but for caring for our students, but also for caring for the broader community. And I think by spring, they're supposed to be, by the end of spring, they're supposed to be built out and ready to roll, and that will be a great asset to our community.
Couple more things.
Of course.
I love the two-plus-two model for teachers, what community colleges and four-year universities did to show like these other classes you need to take because so many folks before that have taken classes that don't transfer over to the four-year universities. So they don't have to take them.
And this is still a work in progress. There is a state council that is continuing to work to, if my university friends are listening, forgive me, twist the arms of the universities to accept credits from community colleges the way they should. Our prime example was, we had a student whose credits transferred to in engineering at Purdue. That student then went to Oregon State and they said, no, thank you. That's going to change.
It's worked really well so far with the teacher portion of it. The Early Childhood in Spanish program is really, really good. I'm working, a friend of mine, he works closely with United Way about getting more folks of color in preschool, and that Spanish program helps with that from the Hispanic side, like having preschool providers that are Hispanic. What we need to do is to get more Black folks into that, into those programs too, because I know when I was looking for preschool, it was important for me to find a preschool that had people of color working in there. It was really difficult. So if we're able to get more folks of color who can own and operate these preschools, the better, right? So, you know, the program, Dawn Upsetted up on Hendrix, she's done a really great job. And I've had folks from Wycombe, the Madres Group, who are Hispanic, you know, bilingual who are 100% interested in taking those, that course so they can do that stuff. So you're doing a really good job on that side. And I got a lot more I want to say, but we can do that up there.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd say that I'm getting close to my time and close to your honored guest.
Just one last thought. It's kind of a big picture thought, probably a longer-term question, but much of the rising cost of building buildings, particularly affordable housing, is due to the fact that there are no subcontractors available to do the work so they can charge whatever the world they want to charge.
We found that with our bottom projects as well.
Exactly. So what that cries out for is more people that are trained with those skills. And, you know, given that a lot of young people are coming out of even four-year schools and ending up in jobs that they can't pay back that university loan, you know, having a trade, being in a union, that's the real job, that's the job that somebody can live on.
And we have apprenticeship programs, and the more folks we can get into it, the better.
So what all trades are you guys teaching right now?
So seriously, if anybody wants any of the trades, we're there for them.
So it's just a matter of getting the kids excited about it?
It is. We have a continuing problem convincing parents of college-age kids these days that it's okay, in fact, really good to have a job in which you make things or fix things. There was a period of time, probably close to 20 years, in which the message out of this country was, you need a four-year college degree or you're a failure. And that message was wrong. And we are still fighting the battle to get parents to let their kids take the classes they want to take because the parents think it really isn't a path to success. The ship is starting to turn, and unfortunately, the pandemic kind of swung it back. But yes, that's a message we try to get out, and if you can help us get that out, that would be wonderful.
Let's start again.
Do you mind remembering correctly that West Water Environmental Services has conducted or does programs with you all for exactly that purpose?
We catch water treatment and they help proselytize and say, this is a really good job, you should want to do it. Food does not sell.
Well, I think they're working on that. There's a soup museum.
Yes.
So I'm a big fan.
But yes, you've got a fabulous water treatment program, but you got to teach your kid that that's what they want to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
So after the study session, council will hold a special session at Milwaukee Park. Special session, council will tour the college camp with U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley, partnership council. After the walking tour, council will meet via Zoom in the open conference to hold an executive session pursuant to Oregon v. statute of laws, S. 192 that 6602H, to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation, litigation, like we have last. That we are adjourned. Thank you.